Eight o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My bucks.
Okay, when you're in a meeting, yeah, we shut your your phone off, okay, kids? First thing on the agenda this morning is recognizing National 4H Week. So, if somebody wants to...
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today during National 4H Week. My name is Sarah Lighty and I'm with NDSU Extension Ramsey County. Joining me are my colleagues Lindsay Overmeyer, Tricia Berg, and Pat Belandry. We have a few of our fellow 4H members here today, Adley, Casey, Carly, and Caitlin, who in just a moment will be sharing some of their highlights and accomplishments from this past year. They were also members of our newly formed Junior Achievement Day Committee. 4H is the youth development program of NDSU Extension and it provides hands-on learning experiences that help youth develop skills in leadership, citizenship, and community involvement. Here in Ramsey County, we've had an exciting year from Achievement Days and the State Fair to service learning projects and leadership opportunities. We're proud to represent more than 200 youth and volunteers who make 4H strong right here in Ramsey County. We're looking forward to showing you how 4H helps us grow as leaders who are beyond ready, the theme of this year's National 4H Week. So now I'll turn it over to our 4H youth.
Good morning, my name is Casey and this past summer I had the opportunity to show livestock at Lake Regent Livestock Expo. During the Ramsey County 4H Achievement Days, I showed my swine, sheep, and beef projects along with other 4H members who exhibited goats, llamas, poultry, and rabbits. I've shown animals for nine years. Caring for these animals takes lots of hard work and dedication throughout the year. And Achievement Days is a chance for myself and other 4Hers to show off those efforts with the community. This year was a little more exciting because we were able to show at a new location, which made it a great experience, which was a fun way to celebrate not only projects, our projects, but also receive family... Oh, but also receive support from families, leaders, and volunteers who made it all possible. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Adley and I'm a proud member of the Ramsey Riders 4H Club and I was also a part of the Junior 4H Achievement Day Committee this year. This group gives youth the chance to be involved in planning many of the activities throughout the 4H Achievement Days. Serving the community on this committee gave me confidence knowing that youth can lead and make a difference, and it made me feel more connected to the success of our 4H Achievement Days. One of my favorite things this year was the celebrity round robin. Members of our amazing community were personally asked by members of the committee. I had so much fun watching them step into the show ring and try their hand at showing livestock. The event brought so many memories, but the best part was how it brought our community even more together. We all got the opportunity to make the event packed with so many fun family activities. And what's special about our group speaking here today is that all of us were a part of the Junior 4H Achievement Day Committee.
Hi, my name is Carly and I'd like to share a little bit about the static exhibits at Ramsey County 4H Achievement Days. This year Ramsey County 4H members entered over 475 static products, projects in areas like photography, sewing, woodworking, STEM, foods and nutrition, drawing, and painting. Static exhibits are one of my favorite parts of 4H because they let me be creative and try new skills and allow me to see other exhibits. I especially enjoy baking, drawing, and painting, and I'm always excited to explore something new. These projects allow me to share the thing that I have worked hard on. Every exhibit takes time, effort, and practice, whether it's baking a loaf of bread, finishing a painting, or sewing a quilt. Each project represents what we've learned throughout the year. Static exhibits help us set goals, solve problems, and gain confidence when we share our work with the judges. Achievement Days gave us the chance to celebrate all of that learning and it was exciting to see the wide variety of talents from 4H members across Ramsey County. Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Caitlin. As a member of the Ramsey Riders 4H Club, one of my favorite parts of the 4H Achievement Days was the horse show. This year we had 21 4H youth compete in classes like showmanship, horsemanship, and speed events. Having the show at the new location gave us a great arena, which made the experience even better for both the riders, our club, and our county 4H. But the best part wasn't just the competition, it was the support. Our Ramsey Riders Club is a really close group and even while we were competing, we were always cheering each other on. That encouragement and teamwork are what makes our 4H Club so special to me.
To help us celebrate 4H Week, would you guys mind if we take a picture with the commission?
That's fine.
And our 4Hers have brought you something... A treat, yeah, some breakfast, exactly. Nice 4H treat. So, thank you for having us here today and if we could get a picture?
Casey. Good luck in mine up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Great job, 4Hers.
Thank you.
Thank you. It'd be stereotyped. You need a donut?
Okay. Got your technical difficulties all ready to go?
I agree.
Approval of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion, is there a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carried. Bills? Any bills? Anyone has questions?
I have one. Let me find it. Emergency valve. Anyway, he had a windshield fixed that we paid a thousand bucks for. Do we not have insurance for that?
It's sent on the sheet that the... There's a claim submitted, I believe. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I saw that too. That's... Must be a really good-sized windshield or something for a thousand bucks, but I guess. Oh, sure. Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Motion, is there a second to approve?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Frith?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye. I'm carried. Financial report.
I do have one question on the financial report. I mean, I know we did a little bit, something a little different at the police station. If we could have her let us know like where we're putting the money and what we're making on the money. It actually shows, because we switched our stuff that we have at the cop shop and it really changed the amount of money that we're bringing in. So, if we could like have something maybe by her, because usually she has someone come in at the beginning of our, of the year.
Like the money market stuff, or?
And if you guys would like to see, I would like to see it.
Just to see like the rate of return.
Yeah, like see what that rate of return is.
Okay.
Thanks, Candy.
Treasurers' checks.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and second to approve the treasurer's checks. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Frith?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Daniel, do we need to discuss anything with that? Letter, letter from, what was his name, the bond attorney? Letter of engagement?
We certainly can. That's not something I'm prepared to really go through and explain today.
So how will we table that until the?
The next meeting, just so the commission is aware. There's a bond agent is maybe not the right word, but Commissioner Frith is looking at getting bond information, what it would take to get a bond together for the law enforcement center and how complicated that might be to have multiple different counties involved. It's kind of a novel question that even the law firm and business that we're working with aren't really super familiar with doing, so I'd like a little bit more time to just make sure I've got my hands on it. But we still have time to get all of that going, but yes, we should address that at a later date.
With that, I approve the agenda.
Second.
Oh. Yeah. Just added, our email this morning, the abstract company wants to add a sign to the building.
I would move to put down a new business.
Okay.
And amend my motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carried. Done.
Good morning. We are in the middle of our meeting right now and as far as regular business for the month, it's been pretty nonchalant. We did certify the Newbury Snag and Clear and the Channel A assessment. We are getting the loans and where the paperwork should be done. We just had to change some names on who can sign for it. We took and have a request for one landowner to do some clean out in the highway right away. And we did have a request from a landowner to review a crossing for a township. He was not happy with some water he feels is sitting on his land now after the FEMA projects up north were done. He feels that there's more water coming out of him. We have not gotten to that yet, but my understanding is KLJ was out there and they feel that the crossing is adequate, the pipe is adequate in the crossing. On a sad note, we had, our office manager had requested a sabbatical a few months ago and did not take it at that time. And this weekend I was informed that she actually does need it, so we will be discussing how we're going to take and deal with office hours after a while here. Any questions for me?
Nope, sounds good.
All right, thank you, guys.
We got fifteen minutes here before the...
Well, it's plenty of time.
Last one was wondering.
Good morning. So we'll hop right to it here. The invoice came in asking for a motion to pay Gowan for those Class 42 chips, three to $4,629.01.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the Gowan for the Class 42 chips. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Frith?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye. Motion carried.
The next one was just FYI for you guys, we did receive that relief funds that I was working on for $62,718.42. That's money available for us to use right away on some of these purchases and some of these upgrades we've been doing. So, I did, I did...
The relief fund can be spent on anything, or?
Yeah. Yep, it goes back as FEMA money to our highway tax fund, so, because we've already spent that money out. It's just reimbursement, but it was from 22 and it was something we weren't aware we could reimburse for until I got into office or whatever position and we took it over, so we got that for us, so. The next item I'd like to discuss is we did finally find a bucket truck. It's in Fargo. I have the paperwork on that. It, it was custom graphics we're using as a sign truck. So, I would like to purchase that for asking price of $28,000. So I'm asking for a motion to move forward with the purchase of that 2006 International Bucket Truck.
And that's going to be used for?
Signing and whatever else we need it for, but primarily for signing. We have no way to get over the rocks or riprap or...
That's what we talked about.
Lake crossings and things like that, so, and we're getting more and more of those all the time. For ourselves, we have to take this, we're down there and stand on them to get up to those no fishing signs.
That must be approved.
I don't know, we're exempt, yeah. That's what Daniel's for. So that's, so it's the best deal we can find. We look high and low. It's hard to find a bucket truck when you're trying to use, find a used one. We said, we'd set a price of about $40,000 total because we want to, we have to equip it. You know, we're going to need some tools for this thing, so we didn't want to put it all into the truck.
Did you have money in last year's budget for this?
Yeah, for the equipment purchase.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the bucket truck.
A second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? We're spending money here, is that correct?
Yes, $28,000.
Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Frith?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye. Motion carried.
All right, our next, our next conversation I had there, I just explained again in the minutes, or my agenda here about the contact I had with Nelson County. So I did reach out to NCS Minerals. They're the low quote for crushed standard salt. I don't know that we're going to need 90 tons. I just put that figure together off of the bid sheet, which I actually have to have asked for a signature on that as well. If we decide to buy any, we can buy it at 30-ton increments. And we probably actually start out with 60-ton, since we mix it four to one. And that would get us up to 240-ton, 300-ton of mixed sand salt to start the season with.
And that, and that will reach out, how much, like roughly, like if we had three stars, four stars?
Well, we, last two winters with a little bit of rain, we've had, the first winter when we had the, all the rain, we used about 100-ton total. But obviously we weren't able to stretch out as far as we had liked because we were sharing off the city until we got our own material in their shed. So I would say that that should get us through any event we would have this year at 60-ton. I would have to scale that back. So I should have, I didn't, I should have updated that, but it'd be a third less. So we'd be more around that $7,500. The numbers aren't exact because it's market numbers as well, so I'll get them, I'll get the exact number, obviously, when I get an invoice for the next meeting, but it's going to be substantially less than that, $3, $3,500 less than that figure there.
You need a motion to order this, or?
Yeah, I do know, I need a motion to order it, and then I also have a thing we have to have the chairman sign that we're ordering it from. I don't know why, but they're a Canadian-based company and they sent the signature page.
To order the three-ton, or?
Thirty, uh, 60-ton.
60-ton?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and second, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carried.
The salt storage facility is all done. If you get a chance to drive by and take a look at it, it's a wonderful addition to our yard. The floor is in it. And I called around and asked a few people for, to put quotes in. TJB Construction from Devil's Lake here was the only one that quoted the slab. Gleason didn't have time, so. Anyway, I'm asking for a motion to accept the $19,887.50 for a 37-by-50-by-six inches thick slab with the half-inch rebar chief fit on center. And then he'll put a topical sealer on it when he's done to protect against the salt. And that's $1,800, but that's part of that $19,887.50. That's total price. And again, that was money that was budgeted for the construction of the building.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carried.
The four DOT invoices came in for the, the county emergency relief projects, the local share money. I put the amounts on there, the Cray Road. These are four separate invoices. The Cray Road is just a partial. They didn't have it total when they sent it. The letter says that. There was no signature pages with these, so we just need to make a motion to pay the, for invoices.
Did they get that paved?
Uh, should be paved either yesterday or today. It was supposed to be last week, but it will be done. We were waiting on, well, Paul could answer better, but he was waiting on one, something from the state on that mix.
Are they gonna, so I've been driving that road quite a bit. Are they gonna like finish it off around the culverts?
Yeah, they, they will, yeah, when they...
That's going to be quite...
They leave that, they leave that ridge out there and... Yeah, should be, hopefully, it's supposed to be. Paul gets, Paul, Paul's pretty tough on the punch list. He keeps on it pretty good, KLJ, so.
Thank you.
Do we want to go through each one of those monthly? Uh...
The invoices.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second to pay the DOT's CER project, local share. Any discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Frith?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Our next item, I had reached out earlier with Commissioner Frith due to some other water issues we've been having. One of the crossings that Mr. Martinson talks about, actually both of those, I'm involved in those as well. Uh, one of those is a low-water crossing. This is the one we're talking about replacing. And the other one was a crossing that now we've found out from the KLJ study is actually okay. That was on James Beamer had requested that crossing to be looked at, but that crossing is sufficient, so we'll be doing something with one of them. The next one here, this David Thompson request, he just wanted to call, they, they were able to move all that water north of the Thompson Farm on the Ramsey County-Nelson County line. I don't know if you guys are familiar where that's at, but all that water is, is gone. So, I went up and took a look at it and the culvert, the existing culvert in there is way too high. They had to actually pump the water into the culvert to get it to run into the channel though, but the water's gone. So before, I wanted to make a recommendation. I talked to Paul KLJ and he went on and looked at it and it's going to be, uh, there's going to be like a very substantial crossing that needs to be put in there maybe like in a year. But for this fall, we were looking at maybe just do it, we want to do a temporary something in there, so in the spring they don't have to try to pump the water from one side of the road to the other, since the culvert's about three feet too high in elevation. Actually, it's like 38 inches, but... The problem is, is there's a power line that runs directly down the center of the road and it's way too deep for our mini and there's riprap on both sides of this thing for seven feet down the shoulder. So, I would have to hire someone to put a temporary in. And I did talk to Brian Johnson and he quoted me $5,500, but I know it's not going to be the permanent fix. It would just get us through the spring runoff. And then we'd have to do the study and get the sizing right.
What are we looking at for a study? Are we looking at?
Just an IWI probably with KLJ.
But my question is, is are we going to do a study, then six months later, we're going, we're going to spend this $5,500 and six months later, we're going to fix it correctly, or?
That's exactly what's going to probably have to happen. Because he said it's going to be an arch pipe, at least one, maybe two. Because it's a massive area of water. I can't believe it's gone. I don't know how they...
Well, it's, where it went, pretty dry.
They got part of the Cooley Cleanout or something, but our road was threatened there since I've been here, right to the top of the road. And it is total, and that's been 27 years and there isn't a stitch of water in that thing.
So, my concern is spending the $5,500 and we've been like this, what, 10 years? Do we just wait till we get the study done and then put it in, or do we want to spend the extra $5,500 that we can use against the project?
That, that's where I'm at here. That's why I'm here with you guys. I, I see both sides of this one. That's why it's a tough one for me to call. I, I would like to not have to worry about water backing up and fighting water when we go to do the install properly, if we get the pipe at the right depth. Mr. Thompson had only requested that we just lower the culvert. That was his request, but it's just a 24-inch culvert in there. There's no way it can handle the flow of water that's, that's going to be there now going forward.
My question is, why is it three feet too high? What was?
Well, it was probably, I'm assuming that we just threw it in when it was two lakes or two huge sloughs.
Oh, just...
So it just kind of got in there because it's an equalizer, exactly. So we had no idea where bottom depths were, or how deep, or how wide to go. And now that it's dry, we can see what needs to be done there. But when I saw how big of an area it is, it's like a 36 or 24-inch culvert isn't going to do it justice. I can tell that just by looking at it with your eye. So, do we want to temporary it, or we just want to tell them we were going to wait and, and you'll have to battle it one more spring and then we'll...
It wouldn't be so bad if we didn't have to move riprap. You know, if it was just to go out there.
Exactly, and then ripraps, there's nowhere for them to run the power lines there because of, obviously, so they went right to the center of the road. That's never a good plan either when you got water.
Personally, I think there's just too many things that are going to add cost to the installation, let alone just temporary one, I...
I agree, and I think, I just want to make sure we were out, because, you know, I initially told him, yeah, we can lower this culvert. Well, then I got looking at this thing and I'm like, ah, yeah, so. I'll, I'll visit with him and tell him what the plan is going forward. We'll get it on our projects for next summer.
Well, at least, at least the individual, this David Thompson knows that.
Yes.
We know it's a concern and that we're going to do something. It's just, do we want to spend that extra $5,500?
Well, and we're up against the wall because of the, just the timing of the year, you know? We have no time to try to get a pipe ordered and try to, we could find the funding, there's extra money built in for projects that pop, you know, but we just don't have the time, the timeframe isn't there to try to shove it all through.
Is this something that needs to be discussed with Nelson County's Water Board?
Well, um uh, once we do this, we'll actually bring it to the Water Board. So our Water Board can
And they'll make sure.
Yeah, when if we're gonna do it that way, if we were just gonna throw a temporary in, we'd be okay because we have that right in that. Daniel and I did, Daniel did come down. We had a nice conversation about those. He's gonna work on that for us, so we'll throw him a plug at that point right now, but he came down and sat with me for a couple hours and we went through all the contracts with all the existing counties and stuff, so we are working on that as well.
Cause I think that county line is our responsibility to go in north and there is on the south side.
Correct. Yep, you're correct. Yes. And I think they would be okay with us um putting in a temporary, but any permanent thing, we would definitely wanna make sure we let them know what we're doing there.
Yes, I'd like a motion to say that we're gonna wait and do the whole project instead of doing a temporary.
I I like that motion, yes.
I'll make a motion that we wait to do the whole project so it doesn't over exceed costs.
Is there motion in a second to not do the temporary work and just get it all done at once? Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried.
Uh, next, the next one is, you wanna hold up?
Yeah.
Yep, that's fine. If you gotta hear, yep.
Yep.
He didn't even know what rope, if he can.
Is Andy County available?
They should mute themselves before they start.
They're they're trying to get on.
But the other county is doing their machine.
Yep, it's in the yellow one. It says trust and agency funds. The first one after that.
Okay, they say they're on now.
Is Andy County on?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll call the meeting to order them since everybody's present. All the counties are represented. Uh, we need to elect a chairman.
Make a motion that we have have Blaine Volk chairman of the Lake Ridge District County.
There's been a motion made to have Blaine Volk chair the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second Blaine to call here.
On the call here, seconds. Any other discussion or nomination? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. I'll turn it over to Blaine.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the uh agenda here. We need to roll call the counties just to make sure they're all here.
Yep.
We'll do a roll call of the counties just to make sure everybody's on. Uh, starting off with Eddie.
Here. Here, Dave Bitch. Here, Jamie Olmers.
Dave. Benson County.
Ron Sutton, chairman, president.
Sorry. Can you guys speak? We need everybody's name.
David. Dick Horner. David, David.
That's everybody.
Is Doris there?
Yeah.
Okay, Pierce County.
Terry Hopper, chairman. David Arge. Dave Migler. Joe Bull. Joel Berg. That's everybody.
Dave, thank you. That should be all the counties.
Yeah, everybody's here for Ramsey County.
Yeah, Ramsey County. We have Blaine Volk.
Paul Hellmy.
Lee Gessner.
Joe Otis. Jeff Frith.
So it's all counties and everybody is counted for. Moving on minutes from twenty twenty four meeting.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for the minutes.
Second.
Okay, second. Terry Hopper, Pierce County.
So we got a motion and we got a second for the minutes from twenty twenty four. All in favor saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to twenty twenty six budget. Does anybody have anything for the twenty twenty six budget?
Um, Terry Hopper, Pierce County.
Go ahead.
Our our issue is the fact that we didn't have a county nurse for just about a half a year. So we feel as a board that we shouldn't have to pay for a full year of our fees because we didn't have a nurse for that long.
Go ahead, just talk.
There should be an adjustment made.
I guess the reason not having anybody out there is we haven't had uh two nurses in Ramsey County for six months either. It's just one of those areas where we're having trouble to fill nurses. So I I don't know how to fix the issue. I mean, we're we're sitting here shorthanded also, Terry. So.
The the job was advertised with posted and just no applicants.
Correct. Did you hear that, Terry? We've advertised uh several times, I believe, and just haven't had any applicants. Do you guys have any suggestions of what we?
The Pierce County nurse is filled now.
And oh, the Pierce County is filled?
It's filled now, yes.
But Terry, this is Terry, this is Denton. I don't know how you break that down because like I said, like he said in Ramsey County, we've had it's been six months probably, but we've been down two nurses here too. So how do we break that down for a county?
Did you hear that, Terry?
Yep, yep, I did. So I I mean, I don't know. I don't know exactly how you break it down either, but that was our concern was the fact that, you know, when we didn't have a nurse, we still paid the same. And I understand we're not looking for a, a, you know, to be an adjustment for the whole thing. It's just the idea of, you know, but without a nurse, don't it uh cause a budget uh overflow or carryover when you're not spending the money for health insurance and uh salaries?
There should be carryover. Well, there, I mean, our
Because we won't have spent that money. So for instance, if we don't have six months here, they didn't have six months there. There's gonna be money.
Yes, but we've
Gotta be money to run over.
We've also done contract nurses to go fill in like one day a week or whatever. So there's, I mean, it's not one hundred percent carryover after.
So what Denton's saying is we've had fill in nurses that have taken some of that budget, not a hundred percent of it. So he'd have to do some figuring to see.
We also have four other departments that go work in all, well, seven to four counties, so it's not just nursing.
Did you hear that, Terry?
So I I kind of. So there's, yeah, and I I understand too. I think we understand as a board that there was a nurse sent over here for a few different things, but the contract can't be as much as having a full time nurse for five months or six months. When you look at the pool, less money got distributed out. So where did that money go that was in that budget? Including Pierce County and Ramsey County. So less money was needed because you didn't have them positions filled.
But that's also why we're not asking for any more mills this year because we didn't need it.
I know, but still what happened to that extra money? There should be quite a bit. If you were short two and we're short one. I mean, there's gotta be money carryover or left over from the previous budget.
But that's why I didn't with, we didn't, we didn't go up. The cost of health insurance went up. The cost of raises went up, the steps went up, and I'm not asking for any more money for this year than last year.
Well, you know what? If you can't make the adjustment, we will.
Wh- what was that, Terry? I or I I think what he's saying is the money was basically put into this year's budget of when we didn't have that, those nurses.
Correct.
So that money got put into this year's budget of not having those nurses. That's where that money went that you guys are asking about. So it's not that the money just got distributed out. They used the money for the twenty twenty six budget. You guys understand that?
Otherwise there'd be a major increase in twenty six.
Uh, otherwise there'd be a major increase in twenty twenty six spending. So that's how he was able to keep the mills where they're at and not have a huge raise. So it in twenty twenty six, basically the money that they had the basically the money that they had in twenty twenty five, they're moving into twenty twenty six. So really you save money for the twenty twenty six budget. It's not lost money. And I understand that there wasn't the services there, but that's how that money got moved into twenty twenty six. You guys all understand that?
So how much was moved in?
I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head.
I mean, you you take five months of the health insurance. If it's two thousand dollars, that's ten alone, ten thousand just on the health insurance. And then you take the wages. You're probably talking. Uh, we just don't feel right on this.
You know, they do it by population and you know, figure that per mill. For them. I'm sure.
Is that right?
Still wouldn't have made any difference. How would we raise it then? So would they have had a shortfall?
Well, no, they wouldn't. The the mills would normally would go up. It's just like raising, you know, our mills or whatever where we couldn't this year because of the
Evaluation, right?
Admins, staff, environmental health.
I mean, you base this whole budget on evaluations for each county, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Not our our budget is only funded by twenty four to thirty percent of the rest is all grant funded.
Did you guys hear that? Twenty four to thirty percent is on the actual mills. Everything else is grant funded.
Cause our budget is two point, what, four million? Two point five million roughly, and we only get seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty, seven thousand in grant are in mill dollars. So the majority of our budget is not funded by mills.
Well, I think we better make damn sure we're being good stewards to how this money is being used. And uh when services aren't for the public being accessible that we gotta be accountable.
I think the health department is accountable to this taxpayers. And I I just, I feel like, yes, last year you guys didn't have a nurse, but next year when Ramsey County is down two nurses, do you, do you, how do we go back and ask the other three counties to pay for the, I I just don't know how you break that down. We're still moving nurses like Benson County sent nurse to Pierce County. Eddie County sent a nurse to Pierce County. Ramsey County has sent multiple nurses to Pierce County to fill in. How do how? How do we break that down? It's a health unit as a whole. We we try to cover it. We post ads. I don't. You guys have a better idea of how to break it down? Let me know. But there's also multiple, multiple other services that we provide to every county.
Does everybody understand what Denton has presented? That there's other services, it's just not nurses? That is uh provided to all the counties?
That's understood, but in a nutshell, money that wasn't spent should be enough to, I mean, there's carryover and if there ain't carryover, I don't know where it went, but.
But that's also where the budget, like I said, we're not asking for any more than we asked for last year. And there's been significant increases in salaries. There's been increases in insurance. I mean, the uh insurance is their fund, no matter how much, like everything's gone up and we're not asking for any more money.
I understand what you're saying about the carryover. The carryover basically went into the twenty twenty six budget with no raising of the mills. That's where the money is saved. You won't see that until you see next year. Then you'll, I I feel you'll understand where that money got used. You guys understand?
So I have a question, Denton.
Yes, sir.
So you got your grant.
Well, I understand you got to have, what, any?
Your mills.
Sure, we get the mills.
Do you take the mills? Is that what pays the employees or how do you, how do you?
There are certain positions that don't get covered by grants. There's certain things that don't get covered by grants. So that's where the mills come out of. And some grants don't cover enough to cover everything.
Okay.
But, uh, I don't know, I would say 50% of our positions are 100% grant funded.
Okay.
But that's like tobacco and we, but we can get this year, but it's covered 100% either. So.
So the question was asked, how the, uh, wages get paid out of, if it's 100% out of the mills, which Denton said it is, and it's about 50% grant, 50% mill. So that's where you're seeing the money getting spent, I guess, if you want to call that. So I guess, is there any other questions other than the money that got moved basically from 2025 to 2026?
No, we're good.
Hearing, hearing no other concerns. Um, we gotta do a roll call.
You know, it sure been nice if we'd have known what that dollar figure would have been. Or could, could be, or an estimate at least. We probably can't do that today, but sometime in the future, it sure be nice to know what that dollar figure was that was carried over and moved on into the budget.
So would it make you feel better if Denton sent that out to you guys?
Yeah, well, absolutely.
You want to figure that out?
So they'll, they'll, they'll put something together and have that sent out to you guys in some fashion, if that's good with you guys.
Yep, yep.
Okay. What are we looking for, uh?
Doris, represent, take the motion that we approved the budget?
Doris. Okay, we got a motion. We have a second.
I'll second Glenda calling, Eddie County.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Do we do roll call?
Yes, please.
Roll call, please. We'll start off with Eddie County.
Glenda, yeah?
He, yes.
Jamie, yes.
Benson County?
Ross, yes.
Doris, yes. Sammy, yes.
The corner, yes.
Pierce County?
Oh, did Davey do?
This is a good.
Yep, we got it. We got Benson County. Pierce County, please.
Oh, Terry Hopper, yes.
Dave and Art, yes. Dave Magler, no. Joe Bowles, no.
Goldberg, yes.
Okay, Ramsey County?
Oh.
Jeffrey, yes.
We could have all voted no anyway.
We should have. Yes. Will Hume, yes. Yes.
Oh, Will Hume, yes.
Blaine Volk, yes. Motion carries for the 2026 budget. I thank all you guys for being with us for the meeting. Uh, meeting adjourned. Thanks again.
Moving it back to you, Lee. Thank you, guys.
I think you're doing a fine job.
Do you need this back, Lee?
No. How long you got? You got six minutes, seven minutes worth, Jason?
Yeah. Um, the next thing was the full progressive estimate. So we, uh, received that, they like, um, project, the project's pretty well wrapped up. Much less things instead of, but 308,000, 514,000, so that's, I am asking for a motion for the chairman to sign the estimate.
So move. The motion to pay the estimate and sign paper.
Second.
Second. Uh, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aight.
Chris.
Aight.
Volk.
Aight.
Will Hume.
Aight.
Gesner.
Aight. Motion carried.
I would say.
I would say move.
Second.
Motion and second, pay tri-state paving, $37,370. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aight.
Chris.
Aight.
Volk.
Aight.
Will Hume.
Aight.
Gesner.
Aight. Motion carried.
So move.
Second. Motion and second to have chairman sign the change order for replacing two signs instead of, uh, just resubmitting using no guns, negative balance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aight.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Lastly, we are placing, uh, two positions. Um, the devil's name, God's been filling in it with state with some plate. And, uh, so that will be two, others supporting devil's name, the bond is held to each other. You know, strapped up, down, you're so.
These are two positions that moved on or?
Yeah, one is starting back here. The, the first one. And the other one is, um, one of the, the, perhaps, he came back.
Okay, position, so. So they are moving on. We've had very positive feedback from the guy who's been filling in in the Webster district. So I think those people are up in that area are going to be very happy to have the new layman. Thank you. Anybody else got anything else for me?
Nope.
All four and seven are being completed to the soft spots. The culverts are in and they have one of the big soft spots done. They're working on the second and then they move to seven. So hopefully within the next week, they'll be completed as well. Okay.
All good. We gotta be quick, we gotta.
Yeah.
Um, Stratus paving, the Ramsey County four, they got the bottom lift on yesterday and then they're putting top lift on this morning. And then they're gonna move out down to Carrery and get that paved. Hopefully, I don't know if they get it done today, but no, hopefully tomorrow.
Commissioner Volk can ask the, the cleanup on the career. I said, yeah, that would be done on the shoulders.
Yeah.
Before, we're supposed to gotta get the pavement on to pull it back.
Right. You know, they're, they're supposed to be top soil pulled up to the top edge of the asphalt on both of those sites.
Thank you.
So, yep. Oh, and then, uh, the only punch list item I think we saw on 89th Avenue was they didn't put the inlet protection on the upstream side of the culverts when they were there. I mean, they were marking the plans, but we didn't have stakes out for them. But, I mean, they know what to do. But, uh, Cole stopped in yesterday and talked to Monchla and they are gonna come back out and do that. So there'll be one, one more pay item on that project and then the retainage. So there'll be at least one more estimate for that job.
Thank you. Ah, moving on to nine o'clock. Uh, looks like, uh, Brenda, the community shelter.
Morning.
So I guess I got one, only got one question for you, Brenda. Um, I received some phone calls about this. My understanding that you got a grant from the North Dakota homeless grant?
Yes, we did.
And as I understand this graph here, is that, that's for shelter activities?
I, I don't have a grant or a graph.
Uh, it's the one that, uh, North Dakota homeless grant applications funded was off their website.
Oh, okay.
Um, says 46,000 for shelter activities or operations, essential services, 10,000. Outreach 10,000 and then HIMIS or HMIS is 8,200 for a total of 74,200. How does that? Is that going into the shelter that you're asking the money for?
Well, the operations, so it each has to be within that category. So the operations for that 46,000, yes, that covers salaries, the rent, um, boom. So this, actually, that grant has always been a lot less than that. This year we were awarded a higher amount, but but, um, the ability to, to give some of the staff raises and also to cover when the weather is bad so that the shelter is not closed during the day. If there's a snowstorm or if it's raining like it was the other day. Um, uh, the essential services would be to cover some of the transportation. So like the gas for the van, time for a staff member to take people to those appointments during the day. And we just had to have over $3,000. It was actually $4,000 of repairs to the van, which, um, that's gonna take a good chunk of that. Um, outreach is street outreach. So that means it's going out and seeing if people are homeless and need those services and also providing the case management. And so so it's not a huge amount when you look at, we have four employees plus I've never drawn. My salary is not covered by that, but, um, it, it goes quickly. So under that is assistance with employment, with filling out housing applications, taking them to, to interviews, to see housing, um, apartments. So the case management, some peer support, referrals to other services, transportation to those other services. I will tell you the staff there, there's nobody paid over $10 an hour. So it also gives the ability to give them a raise. There isn't too many people around that will work for that amount anymore.
I can't find your original budget, but your original, uh, breakdown that you gave us was, your budget was like 97,000 or something.
Ninety-seven, six, thirty-two, eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, I, I do have one question.
Okay.
You have in the budget under the income, 5,500, I imagine that's one of your numbers, but it says grants, right? You have 60,000. I understand that, but so obviously if it's saying grants, that's plural. You have more than one grant other than this grant that comes in.
Um, so the funding that we would receive from the city would probably be under grounds. Um, the funding from the county would probably be listed under grounds. Um, and you know, the community foundation that would be listed under grounds if it were, um, so, so no, right now there is not other grants coming in. That is the only grant funding for this year is coming here.
Any other questions for Brenda?
So if you're asking about grounds, sometimes grounds are just for a short time. So it might be.
And that's why I started with you saying that you want to give raises off the grants. I don't know how you get raises off the grants if it's not a guaranteed thing every year. So then when you give a raise, next year you're gonna have to come and ask for more money because now it's a guarantee.
Or do you take that away?
How, where, where does it come from? And to me, a shelter, when this shelter was, came about, I don't know how many years, it is what it is. But it obviously started on donations, right?
I wasn't involved when it started. It was started by a group of all.
And then all of a sudden, it's like everything else in the community. You bring something in, you think it's a great thing. And then all of a sudden it becomes tax dollars that has to keep it funded. At, at some point, where do we stop with the tax dollars? Where do we, if something gets built from donations and now all of a sudden you put it on the taxpayers? If the, if the donations stop, and I, I see you get some donations and I'm not saying that you don't because that'd be a lie. Um, but then if the thing just builds, 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 you can't keep building and not have the money there. And just expect taxpayers to keep paying on something that started off with donations. And that's where I have a tough time. If it was just Ramsey County that we took care of, which I know it is not, that's struggling for me to say, I don't know, I'm telling you, I'm not gonna say five counties. And we're putting in the money to take care of those counties. We're being the hub. I mean, if I would look at this as the police station, we have different counties in there, but every county has a piece of the pie. They all help us put the jail together. If we didn't have those other counties or they weren't paying us something, we don't take their prisoners. It's no different here. And I get it, there's homeless people. But we can't just be the hub and take on all the homeless people with no help. It, it's, it's hard for you to keep running the operation if you don't have the help. I understand that. But I don't think it should just be on the Ramsey County. And I look at, if you were getting 10,000 from the city, which you're not getting anymore because they said no, and you're getting 25,000 from us, where's the other help? If it's just grants and donations, these, these other communities need to help also. So that's a, that's a struggle bus for me, you know? It's, it's tough because then I would like to say we're only gonna help Ramsey County. And I know that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to help anybody that needs help, right?
Well, I have, I have two things with that. Last year when we were here, you and I had discussed going to outside and, and I didn't hear back from you and I did email you. The second part of that is I, I'm not sure where you're, we don't have people, if people show up. we don't have people, if people show up in Devil's Lake and they're homeless, they don't have an address, so I don't know if they're, where they're from. But look at the workforce in Devil's Lake. Because I know what you're getting at, you're thinking Native Americans.
Not here, but in town.
I know, but a neighboring county, but the majority of the people that stay at the shelter also end up staying in Devil's Lake because they get jobs, we help them get jobs, we help them get permanent housing. So they do become residents of Ramsey County. We have some that also live in the neighboring towns, but it's in Ramsey County.
And that can be good or bad, because I'll guarantee you, everybody that you bring here.
I'm not bringing people here.
Okay, people that you're helping, you're saying that they get jobs, you're telling me a hundred percent of the people that get jobs stay good to the community? I don't believe that.
I didn't say that.
Well, you just told me that I said that it's native. And I never said that either.
Well.
No, so I'm gonna put words in your mouth like you did to me. I don't feel that's right.
I'm not.
That's not, that's most of the question.
I just think twenty-five thousand dollars for something that we're funding. I have the question of why did Devil's Lake, the city, drop?
They said because of the, how the state, something with how the state is, um, with the funding. I, I'm not sure all the details. So it's not that they do not support the, the shelter. It was for other reasons. We are also increasing because of safe closing, and I know the county used to fund safe, which you are not funding anymore because it closed. But we also have an increase because we're also housing, housing some of the domestic violence homeless as well.
So this, I was told this, so I'm gonna ask the question, is, is the, so you have sleeping rooms, right?
Yes.
And then, like, uh, each room doesn't have a bathroom, per se. Um, so I was told there's no locks on the doors. Is that true?
For those rooms?
For the sleeping rooms?
No, there, there is not. There's a reason for that. So at the old shelter and at a lot of shelters, it's just one big open room, kind of a dorm style of business. So we don't allow them to lock their doors because we don't want, we wanna know what's going on there. They can close their doors to change clothes or whatever. And there is a big bay area on each side, so there's, it's probably the size of this area where there are like four beds. So it is more of a dorm style in that area than there are two private rooms, but it's not all private rooms. So there's a bay area on each side for the men and the women, and then a few private rooms.
So this is just, I don't know, for what, but, so if you, if you have somebody comes in as an abused person, to me, I would think that they would wanna be able to lock their door. I mean, just because of the situation they were just in. I mean, how do you come, I mean, how, how does that?
They can close that door, but, but we don't allow them to lock the doors. And in that case, there's someone there with them, there's staff on duty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so it's not like they're gonna be bothered, but the reason why is also, you know, we wanna make sure they're not bringing drugs or alcohol because it's a sober facility. So that's also the reason why they do not lock their doors.
A real simple question, Brenda, what would happen if you lost the funding from Ramsey County?
Well, you can see that the budget last year was, with expenses, and our expenses are higher this year because of the, the lack of food. So we're also supplying some food. Well, we would operate until we, till we couldn't. And so I think there's also a misconception and, and the people that are at the shelter during the day, because the shelter is closed during the day from nine until four. Most, so right now, I just called last night and asked, what is, what is our numbers at? So last night there were six people at seven o'clock. And so I said, tell me how many are working, how many are doing something else? So three have jobs they go to during the day, and the other three go to the Freedom Center during the day. So they're not loitering around town, they are doing things. And one was going to an appointment at Social Security today to check on his disability. Another one had an appointment at the Human Service Center. So we also make sure that they go to those, and we also partner. So if it's, you know, we, we try to have everything in place so that when they do move into their own apartment or housing, that everything's in place for them and it's an easy transition. And if it's a case where they need counseling, we make sure that that's up, we work with the Human Center, Human Service Center with their path director. You know, we do what we can so that, so that.
So you're gonna, thank you. Work with PATH and Human Service Center, what other local and state and federal agencies are you partnering to provide services?
Well, Mountain Lakes, to make sure that if they qualify for SNAPs, let them get food benefits, if they're can get Medicaid, those things, we partner with them. We partner with the state programs, if they qualify for nineteen fifty-nine or Community Connect, or if they, trying to think what other programs.
Do you work at all with Dakota Prairie Community Action Agency?
Oh, yes, we do. Yes, we refer a lot there because they also have a HUD grant that funds first month's rent and deposit. Um, sometimes they can take care of the, uh, application fee for housing. We also work with the Catholic Church. And they're, um, Saint Vincent de Paul. And so we do, we try to know the resources and bring them to those resources. So if they qualify, if they are somebody that may qualify for general assistance from the tribe, we work with the tribe. If they, um, but most, in most cases, they're actually people from the area. So I think maybe I told you this previously, but like last year, we had two high school students who stayed there. They were eighteen years old, so they weren't minors, but one needed to, his parents had, uh, kicked him out, and so he stayed at the shelter for a couple of months. And had many conversations with Mr. Hanson to make sure that he got to school, that his homework was done, so that he would graduate, was the goal. And it was, we succeeded. So staff there helped him with that. We had another one who, um, kind of the same situation and worked with him. So, so there are a lot of local, there's another, there's a local person staying there right now. And he, I met with him yesterday and he said, well, I wanna get my own place, it's just my, you know, my credit sucks and I can't get into an apartment because of it. The other thing is, is there's a lack of affordable housing here. So transients, we get a few. It's surprising where they're from. They stay short term. So, and then they move on. And generally, in that situation, we refer them to Saint Vincent de Paul, who will buy a maturing ticket, and they usually leave within a day or two. I think that, um, we had a situation last year where we did have a neighboring county that brought somebody, their sheriff's department asked and brought somebody and dropped him off. I don't, maybe he didn't even ask, just brought him here. And that scares me that if we do have funding from those counties, that then we can't say no, where now we can say no. So that's also something to think about.
Candy, could you refresh my memory of what we contributed last year?
Any other questions for Brenda? Right, thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
So is there any other discussion on the budget?
I had one question that I noticed on. Was digging back through at the spreadsheet that you had sent over before the last meeting. Um, under the planning and zoning expenses, you have two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand listed there, and we had, said fifty, I believe? I guess I have a question on, uh, the position that we are contracting for, for HR. Like I talked to you a little bit on this, Lee.
Yep.
I see it in Candy's budget here, that, uh, we approve six hundred dollars a month to pay to Candy and three hundred to her helper. Which, like I said before, I don't have any problem with that, but that doesn't add up to what the position would be. And I don't know what the cost is gonna be, Candy, of the, the HR, like, how much is that gonna add up to the amount that we have set aside, or? What are you thinking? Because we don't plan hiring that position, we do plan a contract, right? So with that contract, I guess I'm asking, with the contract, what we're paying you guys to do payroll, doesn't add up to that eight thousand, whatever that amount was? Are we gonna be under that, or, you, you know what I'm saying? Cause I don't know what the HR has been doing as far as the contracting right now. You know, where we're, we're sitting at, and then we'll, we're paying out to you guys, which I, I get it, it's other duties.
Yep.
How, how is the balancing?
I left it, I left it at that amount because.
To see where we're at for this company.
There's, well, I mean, we've only had her for
And, and that's, that's what I'm saying, if, if we've only had her for a quarter, where are we at for that quarter? Does it get to that amount? I know Lee and I had conversation of this, and
Yep.
I don't know, right?
Right. And she's been like very, very frugal with her contracted hours. She's been trying to keep them within that.
Get that in the service as a service.
Yeah.
Right, you know?
Yeah.
I'm just, so that we stay within the budget, which we should, right?
Yep.
But are we gonna be way over on that budget, or we won't know that until after this year?
I know that she wants to, um, she wants to address stuff within the handbook. Because there's things within the handbook that need to be
Fixed.
Changed, fixed, changed, reworded, redone.
Because that will help with the costs in the future.
Yes.
That's the way I understand it.
Yes.
And I guess that would be extra, I would say, after you.
It's basically what HR would do, and granted, we would have to pay for it, and that would, right, come out of that salary or whatever we're calling it.
Right.
And I, and I, we're basically using that salary to do the payroll and the services that we are getting.
Yep.
And that's all I'm asking you. Just see where we're at, you know?
Yep.
And so that we're all on the same page and we know that, okay, there's this mu- much money there. So that if we were to go above it or below it, we know in a year's time.
Right. I guess, um, one of the things I've talked Candy about is, um, Daniel's mentioned going through the job descriptions and making sure that their following century COVID, make sure that we're, haven't left out anything or have something in there we shouldn't have in there. And to me, that would be above and beyond what the contract, the time is. And I think, like, you and I talked, is that we need to, and I don't know how this should be started, but we need to have, uh, some kind of guidelines that, employees aren't going directly to HR, that there's a, a way to, I mean, if it's, if they have a problem with their supervisor, then I think they should go to their portfolio holder or something. You know, so that, I don't wanna call it frivolous, but some of the
We don't have
personality conflicts.
Something that could get taken care of in-house prior to going to HR. And now all of a sudden we're getting charged crazy money from HR, and, you know, because they're gonna do their job, she's gonna do her job, or whomever it may be.
Right.
And I agree with you, Lee, because there has to be a chain of command, if you wanna call it.
Right, and I guess, I don't know how, if that's something she should be able to do, or.
Just jumping in, I've had some brief conversations with Ms. Backingard about the handbook and about the job descriptions. She has a lot of great ideas. She has already, in her short time here, identified some things that she would like to bring forward, just so that Ramsey County is up to date with just basic practices across the country. And so there's plenty that she is, uh, certainly are already identified that, uh, we can work on with me, with Candy. At the same time, she's also being conscientious about, uh, her hours and her budget, what we have to work with. She's been great in working, uh, with me and the sheriff on an issue, and she mentioned that, you know, she's here, if we have to go over her times, she's willing to do that, but she wants to make sure that we're not being frivolous with how much we're paying her. So a- all of those are things that we, we will be able to address, and she will be a great resource for me to make sure that what we're doing as far as HR is concerned here in the county is up to snuff and not gonna get us in any
Basically, HR is keeping us toe, putting our toes in line.
Yes, and, and she, and she's been great for that, and so I, I just wanted to jump in there and make sure that that was set.
Right. You know, cause I, like you and I talked, Lee, this could go way overboard if we don't have some kind of chain of command. You know? And, and I don't wanna make it so that an employee feels like they can't go to HR, because that's not true either.
Right.
But hopefully, most of our supervisors can take care of the problem in-house, if there is a problem. Or, or, you know, they go to them, supervisor goes to the individual that needs whatever. What do you think, Jeff?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out where the hell we are in our agenda. Because it seems like we got a little sidetracked. Well, we sure exactly.
Oh, this would, yeah, this would be actually down to new business, I'm sorry. I, I screwed that up. So let's get back on track. Thank you.
Yeah.
No. Let's do the unfinished business. The Devil's Lake Planning Board appointment? Do we have a name for that? We have one. We have one.
Elizabeth Black submitted her.
Oh.
Her interest.
Oh.
I'd make a motion to go ahead and. Elizabeth to the Devil's Lake Planning Board as a county representative.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, I think that would be a good. Person to have on there, should almost possibly since she is a county. Assessor. So that might be a. Might look at that maybe being a. Good, a good fit. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Then we have the Zone Board appointment.
Yeah, there should be a, I know you're in fact, um.
Yep.
There's a young man named Nygard that would be interested to be on the Mountain Lakes Zone Board. Uh, resumes included. I know that the people from. Uh, Mountain Lakes are pretty excited that he took this interest to do that, so with that being said, I'd make a motion that we appoint him to the Mountain Lakes Zone. Social Service Board.
I'd second that.
Motion and a second to approve Mr. Nygard to the Mountain Lakes Zone Board, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion carried. Uh, new business. Um, court facilities improvement letter in the packet somewhere. Was that in email?
Letter we have to get from there for improvements, uh, they'll generally, or building improvement. Cover seventy-five percent of their cost on a court building, security, whatever thing has that it's a. Cost share of seventy-five percent did not pay personnel and ongoing expenses. And whether or not, I think it's, they'll be in the year that we have for. Uh, applying for something like that.
Has there been any, like, has the court or anybody asked for any?
They, they generally do a um. An ask for security personnel revamp the, and then revamp the entryway for the building. But ongoing personnel costs that we're not covering.
Okay. Uh, MOU with Secretary of State. Was that in the packet, Candy?
Um, this is. This is related to um. All the new equipment. It's just, it's something that we have really never. Done before with the Secretary of State, it's always just, you know, they purchase equipment. Here it is.
This is something they purchase equipment, no cost to us?
Correct. Yep, they've done this for. Let me see. Yeah, um.
So they're just looking for us, for motion or?
Yep, we need to approve, need to approve the um. The memorandum of understanding um. Relating to the um, to the equipment um. Like the care. The storage, the maintenance.
It's basically they're paying for the equipment, wanting us to make sure that we're saying that we're going to take care of the equipment appropriately.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. State Fair Delegate is next, Beth Black was that last year? Um, I guess.
I, I had asked her and she had dated that November eighteen to work for her.
Okay.
So she would attend again on our behalf. I would make a motion that we not made. Elizabeth Black as our representative to State Fair.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second to appoint Beth Black to the State Fair Delegate, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion carried. Uh, approve, or approve the praise values. That was added yesterday. There's also a printout.
Yep.
Um, I believe the. Darker ones on the handout are this year's additions to the list. This would be the school stuff. Uh, no, this is the foreclosure or tax, back tax deal. And it looks like that would be at the next meeting. Have the hearing at five forty-five.
I do plan to reach out to the city of Devil's Lake and the city of Lawton again. Asking. Want their property.
Oh. So this hearing would be an auction then for this stuff?
What would be?
So all these people have gotten these notices, correct? Yeah.
The hearing, the hearing is for like township cities.
Yep, like we do.
Yep. And then the sale is the third Tuesday in November. Um, so hopefully this list changes. No. But this is where it is as of yesterday.
Do I need a motion to set the hearing date? Officially?
Yeah, approve the, approve the list and.
Approve the list, okay. Motion to approve the current list and set the hearing date for the twenty-first at five forty-five, which would be our next meeting.
So moved. Set it.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried, now we're to the budget. Any other discussion on the budget here?
So should we approve something or have HR update our handbook? Do you think? That we were discussing?
Like, make a motion to have her do that?
Or, yeah, what do you?
I, I think, I, I, you certainly can if you want to, uh, I think that's something that.
We just work on?
I, I, I would be working on uh with Ms. Backingard and she would be working with obviously the supervisors in the building as well, but. No, I, I think we can work on that in the background and present something to the commission at a later date. So that you can decide at that point whether or not you want to approve. And we'll obviously have regular contact with our portfolio holders about. With all of you individually, just to keep you updated as to what we are thinking so that we're not wasting a bunch of our own time. And resources for the county going in a direction that the commission doesn't want for their portfolios.
In Candy, you were saying something about meeting this HR lady? Like she was planning on coming out so we can. All have a, put a face to. Someone, if that, I'd appreciate that.
Like I said, when she's, when she's fully recovered from her.
No, that's.
Yep, that's her plan.
Well, we have to approve this, so um, is there anything in the general fund portion of the budget that we need to talk about? Billy, you asked for the wages and stuff to be sent out to everybody. There's something you want to talk about?
No, I was just curious what the different percentages would be and what the end number would be for that.
So is there anything in the general fund that you want to talk about?
I have one for our state's attorney. And I know that we have approved it, but adding a third position, um, is that something that's really needed?
As I state every time, Commissioner Hodis, yes. If this commission wants to have the heightened level of support that I think my position is. Maybe not required, but certainly it's prudent for me to be involved in getting the handbook updated and getting the. Audit of what everybody's doing, job descriptions, as well as supporting the highway department, as well as supporting the human service zone. Because I, as state's attorney for Ramsey County, supports the human service zone, which works in Rawlett County, Benson County and Tanner County. Um, providing support to the sheriff's department, more training for the sheriff, more training for the PD. Improving the basic level of services that our justice system is able to provide to the citizens of Ramsey County. I think that third position uh will give us a lot more bandwidth to do all of those things. We haven't had a jury trial in almost two years until this past September because. We weren't going for sentences that were unpalatable to defendants that we see in the courtroom. And so, being in the courtroom, doing jury trials, holding. Uh, defendants, people accused of crimes accountable for their actions, going through the process of. Actually having trials takes a lot of manpower. And we haven't been using that manpower for the last couple of years and there's a heavy load to lift while. Getting ready for trial as well as all the other duties that we perform. Uh, that third person will give us the ability to get ahead, as we discussed last month. We don't have the ability to. It previously, we haven't had the ability to be proactive and that's one of the things that I think Ramsey County will greatly benefit from in the future, so yes.
Anything else in the general fund?
What other salaries were adjusted upon three percent that we had initially agreed upon? Were there any others?
Not that I'm aware of.
You did within your department?
This was, this was also because you took the one position, give duty and split the duties and that's how. He was able to take the lower wages and move them to that, we had a conversation.
Yeah. And that's something that. If it's approved, we're going to figure out. Because that was in effect until next year. We're trying to, so I'm not, we'll be on the thing like here. For a couple of months, then we increases to the, you know. We're too much short, there are two people.
Yep.
Make sure you're careful with that because you have people on board and you don't want to make it like someone waited a six month or a year to get that wage. And all of a sudden you bring somebody on three months and you put them at the same page, I agree with that.
Well, they know it's the same, like, same as for all the hires, a little bit, so it's all for the people who played the last year or two. So I've been very upfront with them, with the guy's sense, such people having staff.
That.
This is what I'm hoping to do. I mean, it's all good, they're best decision at the end of the day. So I know what's wrong with that. And then at some point, um, there's a way, you know, it's always something to repeat, to repeat. But they got something in three, there's every one that's fairly good. That are being affected by this, this bill, that's just the way it is. So.
That was the church.
They all, they all are over there, some say they don't, I mean. I'm just speaking up, but this is the plan, there's a plan, see, that's what's going to happen. Going forward, once they're, then they're, then I'm a pro, they're very. And look at everything as far as. Okay, more step. Increases, things like that. For now, it's just not part of it. Anything else?
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on the general fund? Portion of the budget? If not, I entertain a motion to approve this portion of the budget.
So this, this uh. Brand does come out of the general fund?
Yeah, become out of the auditors. Correct.
Is that what miscellaneous was miscellaneous planning, it's almost at two seventy-five? That's why that was so much more.
Was why?
Because the miscellaneous portion of that.
Well.
Yeah, she's got fifty thousand here for the planning and zoning, but that's under the miscellaneous, so it's all grouped together.
So it's all grouped together.
Oh, okay. So that's not general then?
No, it is, it is general, it is general.
I'll make the motion to uh approve the budget without the twenty-five thousand dollars going to. Support the home shelter.
Is there a second?
I have a tough time with just the fact that they are covering the bases that safe used to. Providing the services for the abused individuals. And if they're covering that base, I mean, you can think what you want about the rest of it, but for twenty-five thousand dollars, I have a tough time abandoning that segment of our population.
For the people who use safe?
Yeah. That is no, no longer here and they're covering that base.
I don't know if the sheriff or Daniel can answer this question. How much? And this is probably just for information purposes, how much of that? How big a hole does safe not being open create in the community, I guess is the only way I've got to.
I can't really answer that question completely, um, from my perspective, because that's something that I deal with a lot. I think there's a huge hole, uh, domestic violence protection services relocating, uh, victims, having a safe place to hand off children, which the homeless shelter isn't a part of. Having programming, domestic violence programming, which is a requirement for domestic violence criminal cases. There, and there's probably a laundry list of things that they do outside of what I specifically do all the time or handle.
So, question, I understand what you're saying, Paul. Are they qualified to take on the safe stuff? Don't they have to have certifications to do that? Would you just push something from one, safe had to follow requirements?
Yes.
So did, now you just, what I see is, I get what Brenda was saying, they're taking it on. But are they fully qualified to do that?
They are not doing all of what safe did. They're simply a safe place for domestic violence victims to leave the home and stay at the shelter as opposed to remaining in a dangerous environment. That is the only part that I understood she was taking on. They don't have the qualifications to do any of the training or any of the treatment settings. I, I highly doubt that they're doing custody exchanges at the homeless shelter as well. I think it's primarily just the residential stopgap between the two situations.
Do you have anything to add, Sheriff?
The safe provided for whoever, whoever. And, oh, there we go. That they got the advocates that helped him through this, which I don't see happening in the homeless shelter. The other thing with safe is these people were put up in places where nobody knows. Well, now everybody knows. If domestic violence people are probably going to go to safe. So that's one of the downsides to it.
For what it's worth, I'm working with CBIC and Grand Forks, trying to get them, uh, to maybe start providing services here in Ramsey County. That's a long project. That's not something that's going to happen anytime soon because they have budget restrictions themselves. But I, I am working on trying to get some similar services brought back to the county. I can't give anybody an estimate as to when that might be though.
Not at your, or cover-
So I guess what I'm hearing is it's, it's a warm bed. It's really all they're providing.
And I understood when you're going to safe, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. It's, it's a protection service, right? Going to the shelter is not a protection service. They can't even lock their door. So, I'm a little bit nervous of that. So if I was, if you have a, someone that's a battered person, they go to, they're not getting the same services what safe provided. And I'm not saying that it's a warm bed, right? I understand that. But I, it's hard for me to say that it's going to be the same type of services. And, I mean, maybe I'll just be born, Sheriff, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here. Would you feel safe to take someone there as, using it as safe?
And my personal feeling, I'd have some reservations with taking them there. I mean, yes, there's people there to watch, uh, but it's not the same program as safe. Where they got the advocates and it's a place where nobody knows.
So do you still have options in a, I don't want to say an extreme case, but do you have other options for what safe did? I mean, you-
Is there somewhere in the state we can use or?
Are, are, are you using your budget for hotel rooms if somebody's abused or, or how, is there other options besides?
We have not used our budget for housing. We've been able to work through things. Usually, we can get them in touch with some relatives or somebody that we can get them to.
Okay.
And then we work on providing, getting them hooked up with some type of services from that point on. But yeah, with, you know, safe kind of was our, our catch-all.
Yep.
And, and they provided the good service. But, uh, we're not going to get that same service.
Not what I'm hearing.
Right.
Went from a ten to a two or a one.
Yeah.
The services they-
Well, I don't think that really, I mean, as long as the community understands that the shelter isn't capable of providing safe, I mean, because they just can't. I mean, it's beyond their scope of work, if you want to call it.
Right. And then the shelter-
Different type of service.
Right. Then the shelter closes during the day, so they got to go somewhere.
I guess I never thought of that. If it's closed during the day, then what?
Right. So what other options do they have from there? I don't know.
So we still have a motion without a second? This will be the second call? Looking for a second on the motion to approve the general fund portion of the budget without the community shelter in it? Is there a second? Motion failed due to a lack of a second. Is there a motion to approve the general fund? Portion of the budget?
So is the general fund the six million, twenty-six thousand, seven thirty-six ninety? And we're doing these by separate?
I would like to do them as they're broke out in the booklet here.
Okay. Move to approve the general budget.
There's a motion to approve the general budget. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion in a second to approve the general fund. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, could we have a little discussion?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I would have, I tended to agree with Mr. Volk on his motion. Uh, but hearing some of the testimony that was said here, I myself would be more willing to vote for something that was maybe fifteen thousand instead of twenty-five thousand, show some support, but yet not vote.
Okay. So where does that leave us? We got to- What's the proper procedure?
I, i- if Commissioner Hodis is, uh, making a motion to amend with a specific, uh, number amount, he can certainly do that. Or if Commissioner Frith wants to amend his motion, he certainly can. I, I think at this point, it should be voted on, uh, but Commissioner Hodis should at least give a specific amount and put it to the other commissioners and it should be voted on. And then if it gets voted down, then it can be rebrought with the amendment to it.
General is where we take all the salaries out of. Is that correct? Not all.
So highway department?
Sheriff. Always different.
Well, the sheriff's salaries are in here. Treasure auditor. Tax director.
Well, I, I think either we break out all the salaries kind of thing and have that as a discussion.
Okay.
Or- So I guess I would, at this time, like to withdraw my motion.
So, let's talk about salaries then. Everybody got their handle here? What would you like to point out, Jeff?
All right, well, when we're doing, doing budgets and we set the three percent and a step, Daniel, were you working off the previous state's attorney's budget?
I was.
And not what you're currently getting as a salary for the three percent?
Yes. Or what I was receiving previously is. And I'm not entirely sure, but I'm, I believe that was discussed when the preliminary budget was presented to you, but that may not have been entirely clear at that time. But the budgeted amount was, uh, the, or the requested amount was last year's budget for my salary. Or, I guess this year's budget for my salary, uh, increased a step plus three percent.
And the extra duties within the auditor's office? Payroll, can we look at finding either somebody to pay an outside entity or something? Because I don't want to continue adding to Candy's overworked schedule the way it was. Unless you're okay with that, Candy. But I think you work probably harder than anybody in here. But at the same time, I think the legislators have unintentionally added additional duties to all our departments. And so, you know, theoretically, we could adjust everybody's, salary by more than three percent than we offered everybody else.
So would you do that as a percent increase? Or would you have to do that as a partial step or a step? Or what's the best way to do that?
That I'm not even sure of. Uh, I just know that there's an additional requirements of all our departments, I think, based on legislative actions. Intentional or unintentional, but, um, I think everybody's taken on a little bit more responsibilities. And not to isolate one particular office, but I, you know, that seems to be what we've done.
But part of that, Jeff, looking at it, I, I understand what you're saying. But part of that is because we lost human resource. If we wouldn't have lost human resource as a job, we wouldn't have had that extra duty also.
Right. And so if we go back a few years prior to previous HR doing payroll, where was payroll being done at before? And was there extra salary duties, uh, for that person that was doing that? And was that then moved to HR when HR came on board and started doing those responsibilities?
I have no idea. Who, how was that done beforehand? Yeah. It was done in the auditor's office.
Is that something that was always done in the auditor's office until we hired HR? Like years passed?
I think so.
Pay, um, payroll was always done in the auditor's office, um, until, um, Nathan had left. Um, and then it left just me in the office. Um, and then that's when Brian stepped up and took on payroll. And then Brian left and now payroll came back.
Do you recall that we increased Brian's salary at that time? We're taking on that?
I would have to look.
I, I can't remember either, but, but I, I know that's, you know, because Candy was on for a period of time before Anthony was, was hired and, uh, he just continued doing that until he left recently. And then now it's come back and added all those extra duties that-
And, and working with, with Nicole, um, and where, you know, like I said, she, you know, she walked into kind of a whirlwind of a storm and, you know, had to get through a few things. And now that things have kind of calmed down, now she's, you know, she's working on like, you know, the onboarding of new employees so that that's not my responsibility. That she will just get me, um, what paperwork is needed to complete payroll, which is huge. I mean, you know, so, I mean, that, you know, I've kind of got paroled out now.
So that $600 that we put in, 300 for Leslie. On top of the step? Or is that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
But that duty could be a temporary thing. It's not part of the wage, it's not set in as part of the wages. That I didn't understand is part of the wages. It's, it's a duty that was put on there because if we were to bring back HR, that would move back to HR. Correct me if I'm wrong. If we were to hire an HR, that duty would go back to HR. So basically the money that we are giving, because it took me a while to grasp this, the money that we're giving you and Leslie is a temporary thing. Hoping that if something was to happen this year, and obviously it's going to have to be a discussion, like we're having right now, Jeff.
Yeah.
You know, obviously if this moves on to next year where we don't have an HR, then there's going to definitely have to be some kind of this discussion of what are we going to do with payroll? So that it's not all on Candy and Leslie. Who, who do we tie it to? Where does it go to? What, you know, what position does it go to? How, how do we make this, this work so that we don't come back into this situation? You know, how do we have a backup?
Yep.
You know, Candy wasn't to come to work tomorrow, would Leslie be able to do a paper thing?
And that's, that's the plan. Because in order for me to show somebody else how to do payroll, I have to understand it.
And I understand all of it and I'm saying just so that we're backing up the backup.
Yep. Yep.
Because I think we've run into a few situations in the last couple of years with people moving on. If people were to retire, that we got to be backed up.
Yep.
So that we're not dead in the water. People need to get paid.
Yep.
You know?
Yep.
Right, Jeff?
Yep, no.
Understanding.
I'm good. Yep.
And there's screenshots of everything.
So what I'm getting at, Jeff, is the extra money that's coming out right now could go away tomorrow.
Right.
If we were to hire that. And then I understand everybody got put on extra duties, absolutely. And I don't know if it's extra duties, they just put more work on people's desk because of the change of what happened out of our hands. This is something that we could have in our hands, that we could move it to an actual payroll person if we had to.
Right.
Correct Candy?
It's not something that would be full time.
And then that's why Brian was willing to take it on. I remember having that conversation. But we all didn't know that this change was going to happen overnight either. You know, they kept telling us, telling us, and then all of a sudden, here we are.
Yep.
And this is where we are today.
You know, because, you know, the zone, the zone has stepped up and done, you know, parts. Because they're, I mean, you know, they're the ones who have the most employee turnover. So they've, they've stepped up too as far as, you know, what they do with onboarding as far as employees to, you know, take some of that pressure off. Because what, what we give to county employees, we don't give to zone employees. It's, it's two different, it's two different things. They have a handbook, we have a handbook. So.
So again, we hired to do our HR.
Yep.
Some of that they're doing.
Yep. Yep. And HR is, she wants to make, she wants to make it so that onboarding is, you know, that is something that when an employee is hired, that they can fill out paperwork prior to starting. Like it doesn't have to be done like your very first day.
A lot of places are going to that so that when they, when they come to work, they're coming to work running.
Yep.
You know, when you, for instance, Lee, when you hire a welder, you know what their experience is prior to them coming.
Yep.
So you have all that prepared for them prior to them starting.
Yep.
And that, that totally makes sense because we do the exact same thing. The HR process is all done when they're coming to their job, their computer, everything's ready to go.
Yep.
They're running with their job.
You know, for instance, I mean, they just had three, three new employees that started this week. Well, she did all of that, she put everything into Andy Purse already. I don't have to do that. So she's going to share all that payroll information with me so that I can set them up with a new payroll system and we're done.
Makes less work for you.
Yep. Where if she wasn't to do that, then I would have to do all that myself.
When we, when we talk about the percentage and the step, I'm all four to three percent. I just want to make sure that all the heads are taking the steps seriously. Not just you just the step because we're offering it as commission. You need to earn that step. If, if you're not meeting the criteria, then you should only get the three percent because that's the locality. But I just want heads to make sure they're holding their employees accountable for that step. If you're, if you're not meeting the standard, the locality is locality, the step is performance. I'm cool with it, just as long as we're holding people accountable.
And a mechanism that you could use to do that is require that employee performance reviews be submitted to the portfolio holders so that each of you knows what your portfolios are recommending for, for step increases. And you have the review in front of you. And you can, you know, look at what the review says, you know, what about what they've done this year specifically? Warrants a pay increase this year? Or if it's just a supervisor going down and checking the boxes and not putting any additional information?
And that's what I don't want.
Right. But you would have the ability to make sure that you're getting the information to support these decisions that you'd like understandably to have more information before.
Basically a paper drill.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's something that we could do in the employee handbook down the line to make sure that everybody has that to comply with. But I, I think that's not a bad idea.
And the only reason I'm bringing it up is I think every one of us sitting here at the table today has asked that question. You know, is it just a given because people sitting on this board here is saying, yep, go ahead with the increase and a step. And I don't think that's at all what we're, we're suggesting. We're just offering that so if they earned it, they get it.
So it was an extension. You've had a performance review and based on that, that was your salary adjustment up to what they started out like we did with three percent?
Is there a salary adjustment for your replacement at the, for the half-time treasurer auditor position?
You still got Jackie in there.
Basically, when Jackie leaves that role, that individual, because Jackie, Jackie's here for, Jackie's here for how much more time?
End of the month.
End of the month. And I see here, she must be maxed out because it says no step, just percentage. So the new individual would get the step plus the percentage. And that was a question I was going to ask, that should be in the handbook also. So if you have a new employee, and I've been asking this probably for three years, if I get a new employee tomorrow, two weeks, do they qualify for that step and percentage? Every job I've been to, you had to work six months before you qualified for a step. Not to say that that individual wouldn't work six months and now the supervisor comes back says they met all the criteria. We're going to move them to that step, even if it was in the middle of the year. Because what a great way to come in and two weeks later, you get a pay bump and you didn't even have to do anything for it, showed up for work. Because I think that's happened, you know.
Sure.
And I'm, I'm, I think that's happened probably in every department. You know, and that's where I've been asking, and like you said, maybe that's what's got to be in the handbook. And I'm not saying that the individual is going to get, get that six-month raise, but that's called probational period usually.
Well, it sounds to me like kind of brainstorming session. What the policy handbook.
Did you get your question answered, Jeff? I'm not, I'm not sure I followed your question to start with, let alone.
It happens, it's easy.
Yeah.
I, I think they got answered. I guess I had one more on the salaries. So is the salaries based on the individual or the position? So if a person changes position or adds a position, and that's different from what they were currently doing or what their job title was, is, is, does that go on their longevity, their scale, their steps? Or is it the position they take on, they start from scratch and that?
Well, they wouldn't start at the bottom, they would have to start in the middle or whatever, salary.
But do they, do they max out if they started a different role, different?
Suppose you could.
That's a possibility. It, it just depends on what, what the scenario is if they're moving into a higher position. Well, maybe, but it's more about the contract.
So it's different title, if you will. So like Lisa, for instance, is a superintendent of schools. She didn't always have that role responsibility.
Sure.
Gave later in her career. And so what she feedbacks don't have the steps on that. There's no steps for that. Because it's a part-time position, is that?
And to answer your question more specifically, that's more about the contract and the offer that's made, the negotiation with the individual of, okay, here's your new title, we're not going to move you at all, you're going to stay where you're at, continue on.
So what your position was.
Yeah, but having something established in the handbook as to how that should generally go or what the different scenarios would be good to have on paper in the future as well.
So how do you want to proceed now? Take the wages out and vote on them specifically? Or do you want to lump them in with? The budget breakdown?
I think to be fair and transparent to all our employees, I think maybe have a separate vote on the wages.
Okay.
Independently.
I, I think, fair. I, I'd make the motion for three percent with the step if supervisors grant that step.
Which, and that should be in, right?
Yes.
The step and the three percent, that's this last column. So motion to approve the wages for 2026, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Otis. Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Okay, so let's back up here. Did we have to approve across a new shield at this meeting? Okay, alright, alright. So back to the general fund portion of the.
I'll make the motion that I kind of agree with Otis, I guess, after more discussion to make a contribution of $15,000 versus $25,000 for the general fund.
I would second that.
So the motion is to approve the general fund portion.
With the.
Of the budget, reducing the community shelter from 25 to 15.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. The highway department portion of the bill, or the bill, Jesus, the budget. I just have one question. So we did the major projects this year, right?
Yes, the FEMA projects, they're completed this.
But I mean, as far as the black topping, the chipsy.
No, that's next year.
Okay, so that's already in, that's in.
That's, and that's in that budget.
This would be the higher of the two.
Yeah, the, it's always going to go that, yeah, on the road planet, the even year will be higher.
Okay.
The reason that this year was higher than an odd year normally though, is because of the FEMA projects from '22, then the salt shed, and then that purchase of that new truck. If that happens, otherwise we're going to have to carry that money and then pay for the truck next year. We haven't heard a thing on that. But when you add all them together, that came up to just about a million and one.
Okay.
With all that lumped in there. So that's only like a $300,000 difference, but then we saved in wages and things like that. And some of the equipment purchases and things are coming out of there, so.
So I just, I was just making sure I had it straight in my mind when, uh.
Yeah.
How your budget, because your budget naturally goes up and down.
Yep. Right, and this year though, it didn't go down as much as it normally would have been a, even in an odd year.
Okay.
But it'll, it'll get, hopefully it'll get, who knows? I mean, I guess we don't know how prices are going to go in the future, but yes, the big project year. And that number would have been more, but then we remembered that, that, that Ramzaconee three project and Ramzaconee four, some of those roads are, are federal highway projects. So the stuff we're doing next year, we get federal highway funding.
Okay.
So we're able to apply for that and they'll be able to, okay, work with us on that.
Anything else need to be clarified to anybody? Your motion to approve the county highway department budget.
I would second.
Motion and second, any other discussion on the highway budget? Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Special revenue funds portion of the budget. I know when Bryce was in and talked about his budget, we're going to formulate a letter to send to the counties, he's kind of given a freebie to. You've done that. Yeah, okay. Because I would assume you want you to be in on the letter writing person, okay? As long as we make sure we get that done. This does include the law enforcement center budget. So is there any questions or comments on this portion of the budget? Motion to approve the budget.
It's worst.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the special revenue portion of the budget, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Trust and agency portion of the budget. How's the airport going to do? I realize this probably isn't the budget, but any concerns currently, Jeff, with the shutdown?
Oh, well, if we lose essential air service, that could be a potential impact. We have to speculate, but. uh, that is federally funded program.
But that's out of our hands.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah.
I think that's something that if was to happen, we'd have to come back and probably have a special.
Well, and, and I don't think that's something that locally can maybe have the difference on.
Yeah, I don't think we ever could either.
So.
But I mean, that.
Just local.
And I, does that affect that money you get in from the essential air service? Does that money?
That's just for the, the uh,
That's just for the.
The sky.
The sales. So there's no wages or anything?
Right.
Okay, that's what kind.
That's just for making sure your, your, your passenger.
Okay.
Portion of the airport.
Anything else on the trust and agency budgets?
I'll make a motion to pass that.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the trust and agency budget. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Will Helmy.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Does that take care of the budget?
Um, and then I will put on, um, I know she wanted a decision by November for like Blue Cross.
So if we get that on the next meeting.
Yep.
Good, okay.
Yep.
Is there anything?
So is there any questions on the Blue Cross portion that you wanna?
Yeah.
Talk about how we got our money on budget stuff?
So looking it over, this is just my opinion. I think we should stay with the plan that we have.
I would a hundred percent agree with that.
And, and the only reason I'm looking at that, anytime I get nervous, anytime you have the, the, the phrase grandfather. I definitely would want some better explanation of what we would lose. Cause you cannot go back. Cause this happened to us at my place. You are not going back, right? You are stuck with it. That's, that's something that we definitely need to take in for our employees. Cause once we would decide on that, it's, it's gone. And I definitely don't want our employees to lose anything. And as Jeff had said, has anybody had to pay expenses out of the pocket if if, if they go in right now and they get a, a referral, they've been covered. Correct me if I'm wrong.
And I did share that um, information with HR. So the information um, that I've gotten back and I just got it back um, yesterday. Um, so before you make a decision, I'll share that with you guys because she um, had questions.
And that's cool. I think we need to run that across.
Yep. She, she dug into it a little bit further.
That, that's all, my only fear, that grandfather clause.
Yep.
And I think it's worth mentioning that for the public's sake, that none of us commissioners receive Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yeah.
Correct.
So this is just for our employees. Benefit that and is needed to maintain many plans, right? Didn't know what's, the word grandfather. And you go and change that and you're not gonna know exactly what you're getting.
No, cause you see it in purse.
Right.
People that come on now, you don't say their grandfather. It's we see.
Then there's always more changes than anticipated.
Hundred percent. You don't know the unknown.
Right, right. And neither does the company, really. I mean, at that point.
No, and exactly, the company don't.
Okay. Anything else on the budgets or portion of the budget? We'll have that on the agenda for next meeting.
Well, we do have to approve the total budget.
Right, okay, that's, that was my next.
Yep.
So Blue Cross would be included.
Blue Cross is self-funded. It is not mill levy dollars.
But it's still funded, right?
Right. Well.
Oh, cause it comes out of the other fund. Comes out of the other fund, right?
No.
Separate.
Not part of the thirteen million.
So could. So could we pass the twenty twenty-six budget with that?
That's what he's asking.
So what you're getting at, Jeff?
No.
Without the and then we discuss.
I don't really recall not passing a budget without it.
Yeah, it's, it's in there.
Okay.
Yep.
So how do we go about that?
Well, it's just a but, I mean.
But it's, yeah. So so what we're approving today is a levy budget.
Yes.
Number one four, what is it? One twelve? One fourteen, one four three. Minus ten thousand dollars.
Right. Yeah, where the other one lists everything.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so the mill levy portion of the portion, that's deadline.
The one that we have.
Yes.
Looks like this for that. Yeah.
Is that clear as mud?
Clear as mud.
So we have a entertain a motion to approve the mill levy portion of the budget. So we meet the deadline of October tenth.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Will Helmy.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Okay, that should conclude, conclude the budget portion of new business. Sign for the abstract company. It's coming handed this this morning.
I sent you guys an email with that information.
Kind of rendering of what.
Yeah, it was kind of a
It'll be a little smoother.
Sketchy picture.
Yeah.
Daniel, what was your, was there something within that lease agreement that would this amend that whole lease agreement?
I mean, it, it doesn't amend the whole thing. Uh, if, so what was in the lease agreement? Was they could affix signs to windows, doors, pretty much non-permanent spaces. It was discussed whether or not they could do something on the brick itself. The feeling was that we don't want permanent changes to be made to the outside of the building. The brick itself, just preserving that as much as they could. Um, I think the previous feeling was they didn't have a sign when they were here within the courthouse. They could have a small sign just so people could know where exactly to go, but this would be outside of the lease agreements. If we wanted to allow this, it would be in writing. Uh, we would send, they, they've submitted something asking for that variance. And if we wanted to, we could specifically say, yes, this is in conflict, but we are agreeing to allow you to do this instead of what was in the lease itself. But that only adjusts that specific term, not nullifying or affecting anything else throughout the entire lease agreement.
Anybody have an opinion?
I'm just curious how it's attached.
My guess would have to be some kind of, putting anchors in the building.
Yeah.
Was there something that we could put a metal post in there, we could put a sign on so it isn't attached to the building? Then we wouldn't be changing the facility of the brick. And then if they were ever to move or whatever, you could just pull it out. Is there something like that we could do? I mean, you could have it right up against the building also, but it would be on a metal frame type thing. Again, that one. When Roger would not want it two feet out and another thing won't be backed around yet, but.
I think this question should be more posited to the uh, kind of the courthouse committee. So that Roger can be involved in that conversation. Because he is the one who would be able to tell us, you know, here's what they would have to do in order to get that sign affixed to the brick or if he had any preference on where it might be affixed to. But obviously this is something that you all have the ability to do. If you wanted to approve it, you certainly can, but I, I think requests like this in the future should probably be submitted to the courthouse committee, just so that everybody can have time. Yeah.
I would like to know what the method of attachment they're proposing. I guess.
And I wonder if there's any city or any ordinances regarding signage.
Sure, hell yeah, because it is now being street right away and all that stuff.
I know one day it might overhand so.
Sidewalk, so that would definitely all have to be checked.
But I believe it's, isn't it just for a rock?
Well, there's a little, small portion of grass there.
I think at the end.
Well, you would like to make a motion to
Yeah.
Table this and send it to the courthouse committee?
Yeah.
I would.
Rock up to the steps and then there's a little bit of grass.
I'd second that motion that would get tabled.
Okay, motion and a second to table this and have it ran through the courthouse committee, building committee, building committee. Any other discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Visitors and delegations have left. Okay, but, yep.
Uh, we were involved in a pursuit last week. Uh, one of our units was going out to intercept and a bolt on the light bar broke and did five thousand dollars worth of damage to the car. This is gonna cost about four hundred and forty dollars to replace the graphics and thirty-seven hundred dollars to replace the light bar. So the people that installed it, we had them reach out to Federal Single because it was their light bar, the bolt failed. They're only willing to cover the light bar portion, so we'll get a free light bar. So, but it's all been in turn then to insurance. We're still able to use the car. So we had some lights we could put inside, so it's still usable. Uh, I applied for the back to blue grant again. I did get notification that Ramsey County is gonna get sixteen thousand, six hundred and some dollars for retention bonuses. And I think they included that we could help pay for schooling, so. Just a couple of things that uh, kinda popped up and hopefully we should have our new cars rolling out here real quick. They're getting outfitted now, so. So just kinda bring you up to speed on what's going on in our, in our shop.
Okay, thank you.
Lastly, uh, I was gonna mention earlier, the online sale thing is um, really grabbed traction. Got a ton of interest. Uh, West has put it out everywhere. We set that fifteen hundred dollar limit for advertising and they've reached multi-state area. We've had people calling from Nebraska and all over asking about the trucks and everything. So it'll be something fun to follow and just see if it actually, if that thing's actually bid like it, it looks, but that starts the tenth. So that'll be this week, close next week. So our next meeting, I'll have some kind of preliminary numbers for you guys.
Okay, thank you. Anything from the commissioners?
Oh, one item from the Heritage Center, I believe they, she sent over an email to all of us with this roofing bid is that dollar forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars she says is in a trust account or roof project. Was that something that was COVID money? It was.
Is she saying it's coming out? We have this money or they have their own trusts to cover this and she's just keeping us informed of what's happening at the Heritage Center?
So this email was from yesterday. I my assumption was that we, the money was in their account, but she's asking if we could please advise on the next steps. So was this I remember vaguely remember some informa- some discussion about roof, like in one of my first meetings when I got on the commission, but I don't. Sure.
We also received our first flexible transportation fund. And that first quarter was three hundred. And then we received our second one as well, that was monthly. And that was roughly something, I can't, that's it, but those are starting to begin. The cities and counties are getting theirs this last quarter of twenty-five. And then the county check, yes, starting the first quarter of twenty-six.
Anything else from the commissioners?
Resolutions, uh, caucus.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock at the armory.
I will not be able to make it out of town. We're, we'll be getting back till late, so.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned.